To call this meeting to order at seven o'clock. Are there any additions to the agenda? No additions, could I have someone move to accept them please? Counselor Lambert, all in favor? Carried. Staff Sergeant? For the RCMP highlights. Good evening.
Thank you, I'll touch on quickly. Uh, March stats. So, January to March two thousand and twenty-four, when compared to last year, January, March, two thousand and twenty-three, we're showing a nineteen point five percent decrease in person crimes. So that's twenty-nine fewer calls, or offenses. Property crime for a total is a decrease of eighteen point eight percent. And a twenty-three point two percent decrease in total criminal code offenses. Specifically, in certain areas, there is an increase of break and enters of eleven point one percent. That's an increase from nine to ten. And forty-two point nine percent decrease in theft of motor vehicles. And an eighty percent increase in theft under five thousand. So in March, we had a total of twenty-four total persons offenses, twenty-three total property offenses, and thirty-one total other criminal code offenses. Our prisoner count for March is one hundred and seventy-eight, which brings us to six hundred and three for the year. So our current, uh, staffing levels, we have three vacant constable positions. Uh, we have one member that's still unable to work full duties. We do have two members identified to come fill our vacancies, they just haven't issued the paperwork yet. And our NCO team is full right now. So, looking not too bad, we just need to get that paperwork cut to get our new bodies here, so.
So when you have management, you don't have constables, and when you have constables, you don't have management?
Well, I'm hoping, uh, this summer, we have both. So, but yeah, so that's sort of-
You're down three constables and two are coming?
Yes. So, uh, there's a member from Hinton who's been identified that's gone through the medical. They're just waiting for the staffing action to be issued. He and his family should be coming fairly quick, cause he's not having to sell a house. He's just renting. So I'm suspecting early summer, he'll be up here. Um, the Grand Prairie member, I think she does have to sell a house, she hasn't gone through any of the medical stuff. Um, but, we'll see how that goes. I'm still recruiting a young fellow from Swan Hills, I'm trying to get cooperation from his boss to let him come up here early. Um, which would put us in really good shape, so. Yep. Now, um, some news, I am told that the RPAC nurse, uh, someone's accepted the position. Uh, I'm told they're from B.C., so I'm not sure how far along that is. Um, I'm gonna be seeing where the RCMP side is for that member obligation of it. I do know, uh, last time it was posted, there was at least two officers that were interested in the position. So that's, that's quite promising that we, maybe we can get that, and see, uh, the benefit it'll do for all our communities, so.
Yeah, our last meeting with the K Division was, there was a member, but no nurse.
Yeah, and I know two of the members that were interested before, I reached out to them saying, hey, keep your eyes open for this, cause it's probably gonna be posted again. So hopefully, that's, uh, that's something we see the benefit of this summer, so.
Counselor Welkey has a question.
Turn me on. Um, sorry. Uh, the nurse, um, did, were they able to find the originally kind of designated psychiatric nurse? Or did they have to modify the credentials for the position at all?
My understanding is, uh, the complete credentials that they're originally looking for.
Okay, perfect.
Thanks, yeah.
Any other questions?
Okay, um, I do know, uh, you have been contacted by Mr. Michael-
Yes.
Uh, Moment. So, uh, this is, it really has nothing directly to do, uh, with our detachment here. Um, I, I have been working with them, I asked them to sort of keep us engaged, because if it's something that, that we need to be a part of, or participate in, we wanna do that. So essentially, this is a fairly new unit at a K Div. They were here last year a little bit, I don't know if you remember the barbecue? In the park that they set up, so it's the same group. And they've been reaching out to, um, many agencies and groups within high level. And I think they're just trying to sort of build up a network, and how, uh, we can help each other, maybe get some of the things we need in the area, such as, like, mental health issues, or things of that nature. I think it's a good program. Um, Michael seems nice on the phone when I chatted with him, so. That's about all I know about that, they just sort of, hey, we're gonna be in town, or we're gonna be talking. Or if, let's say, there's an issue, they'll be sure to let us, let us know. Um, I have asked that if they are having meetings, to let me know, and we're gonna try to be as active as we can. Um, just so that, it's important, right, and we wanna play a role in, in, um, if things can be done better, or wanna play a role in that, so.
Did I send this to you? Okay. Oh, well, he's, yeah, no. What? Yeah, I thought I sent it to you guys. Um, so, we should meet with them?
I think so, um, I don't think it'll hurt, I, I told them, um, don't make promises on my behalf, because if I can't keep them, I won't. Um, but if there's something on board that I, that we can help with, and we say we will, we'll, we'll do it, so. Um, that's sort of the caveat I played with them, it's like, we're all on board, but don't pro, don't make promises for me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Could we reach back to him and say, we'll meet with him? Or I can meet with him, if the rest of council is busy, we can set up a virtual meeting?
What's council's wish? Do you want us to try and book? A particular, or give you, council, a list of three or four dates, and then see how many are able to make it? What, how would you like us to approach that?
Council?
It would most likely be a virtual meeting?
Yeah, we could meet June Committee of Hall if he's ready.
Okay.
Or May, I guess it is, we're only in April now.
Feels like.
Okay, so. You'll get back to-
Yeah, so what we'll do then is, we'll reach out to Michael. And then we'll circulate that information to all of council by email, and, uh, kind of firm it up, I guess, virtually.
Okay, thank you.
And, uh, if there's no more questions, just before I go, I'm, uh, planning sort of our detachment goals, as a detachment this coming year, I'm not gonna take a bunch of your time now. I'll maybe forward some emails. Uh, but I really wanna focus on, um, some proactive type initiatives, uh, warrant roundups, curfew checks. Um, some foot patrols, if I understand that the enhanced, um, shifts will be available. We'll be doing some foot patrols, but I'll send an email sort of what I'm planning, and if there's anyone, or any ideas, or things that we wanna sort of measure. Uh, like schools on patrols, if last year, let's say, we had zero. Maybe this year, our goal is for due twenty-five, and we'll just mark that and try to hit our marks. So it's sort of like a, a game plan, other than the normal, uh, call for service, so.
So is that for the enhanced position, or for the entire?
The entire detachment. Um, it, the enhanced, the enhanced position doesn't, um, take a complete ownership, it's, everybody plays a role, so. Um, come morning, we're there before the school starts, so there's no reason why we can't be seen around those areas sometimes, and uh, we'll start recording that and checking that off, so.
I'm not sure that we talked about enhanced this year.
I got a email, um, I'm not sure where it's at, that's just sort of where, what I had heard, so.
Hmm? Yeah, I know, but did, did council talk about it, other than? It's an interim budget? Um, C.A.O.
Sorry?
Did you meet Staff Sergeant?
Not, not in the twelve hours.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm really rude.
I guess, I just did.
Yeah.
Staff Sergeant Devron Dipmire, this is Ron Leaf, our interim C.A.O., sorry.
Interesting, I was just writing down, um, set up a meeting with Staff Sergeant Dipmire.
Okay, set up a meeting and see what our enhanced position's gonna look like.
Sounds good.
I'd like to see more action in the school zone.
I think, uh, I think we can do that, so.
All right. Thank you very much, council, did you have any other questions? No? Okay.
I said, thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you.
So, uh, six-two is the regular, oh no, six-one is the special council meeting. Could I have someone move those, if there's no errors? Counsel, Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carried. Six-two is our April eighth regular council meeting. If there's no errors, could I have someone please move? Counsel Librian, all in favor? Carried. And April fifteenth, Committee of Ho-
April twelfth.
Or sorry, April twelfth, sorry, special council meeting? Counsel Welkey, all in favor? And, you can tell there's a hockey game. On, um, April fifteenth, the Committee of Hoa. Counsel Lambert, all in favor? Carried. Could I have someone move Staff Sergeant Devron's? Do you have that? Okay. All, uh, Counsel Anderson, Ly, Lydia? All in favor? Carried. So, um, moving on to my report. I sent it to everyone. But I just want to, um, let the world know that, uh, we have hired interim C.A.O., Mr. Ron Leaf, from Clearwater County. And he will serve as our C.A.O. until we can find a new one. Thank you to Director Schmidt and Director Phillips for serving as acting CAOs during the transition between, um, former C.A.O. Clark McCaskill's departure and the arrival Sunday of our interim, Mr. Leaf. So welcome to High Level.
Thank you, council.
Um, April fourteenth, I did go to the chamber, uh, their Connect and Elevate event. Uh, it was at Fox Haven, it was a great, um, opportunity to network and reconnect, and, and, uh, yeah, it was really good, and it was nice to see the chamber active, so thank you, Counselor Lambert, in the chamber. Um, Community Ketchup. I wanted to thank Jenna, she's not here, but a big thank you to all the staff who took part in the Community Ketchup. It was fantastic to witness the numerous community members that were attending the, uh, market, as well as engaging in all the activities, and, uh, eating the hot dogs. And the bouncy castles, of course, were a huge success. So thank you to all of you. Uh, and I was asked by a resident, and I wanted to talk to Jen, uh, Director Clark about this, about the needs assessment survey. As some of the residents that live, um, in the region, but not in High Level, wanted to participate in this. And I said I would speak to council. And these residents are people from the county Zama, Rainbow Lake, that use High Level as their service area. And some of them work here, some of them send their kids here, so. I feel that everybody's opinion is valued by our community, and therefore, council, I would like to have your blessing to allow people that are outside our community, but use this area as a service area, to, um, fill out this needs, um, assessment survey. What does council feel? Counselor Welkey? No, you weren't.
That was a little bit quicker. Um, is it, uh, I, I, I do have a copy of it, but I haven't, uh, filled it out myself, but is it, uh, do you have to clearly designate where you are, um?
No, there's nowhere in the survey.
It's anonymous?
Yes.
Okay.
Put your name if you want. I'm on page thirty of fifty-eight, no.
Mm-hmm.
It's very detailed in there. Is that all?
Uh, yeah, I'll think further on it, we'll see what-
Take Counsel Jessman.
Um, I have no concern with that, I, uh, guess the one way is that we have a clear, clear, uh, opportunity for all to partake, if that's the direction we're going in, and that it's accessible to them, so.
Oh, Deputy Mayor?
I guess as long as there's a way to confirm that they're actual users, even though they're not ratepayers. It's just some of the needs assessment may turn out to be budgetary items, and we wouldn't want that impacted by people that are outside our municipality.
Uh, yeah, if we send it to people, like, in our county, like, our, our county, and Rainbow and Zama, maybe we can change it up, so that there's a name and-
Or at least where they're-
Where they're from.
Or what service they utilize, it just, just because we send it to someone, doesn't mean they couldn't forward it on to somebody else, and we could be getting things, just like some of the Facebook stuff that comes from the Middle East, or whatever.
I'm pretty sure they won't wanna fill out that entire needs assessment.
You know, we've seen some-
Can't that happen now, though?
I think it's just sent out to the ratepayers, but-
No, but they could forward it out.
Yeah, oh, for sure, but as long as we have a way to identify that they're actual users.
Counselor Jessman?
Ju- just clarification, so you said, you said there were certain people out in the county that were interested in, and, uh, you just said that, in your other comment here, you said we would send them. Are we sending them, or are we opening it up for people to utilize it?
Well, I guess they phoned me, I guess we wouldn't send it to them, I guess they'd have to come here to get them. They were handing them out at, um, C- Community Ketchup. And that's where the questions arose. Counselor Welkey?
I agree with the Deputy Mayor, just, um, trying to ensure that the information is accurate, but I do believe with a paper copy, uh, we would not see problematic responses, like we normally would with online surveys and that sort of thing. And perhaps if we just had them available for handout here at the town office, then we would know that anybody who did fill them out from this point forward, had to come in and get one, and take that time to do it, so. Again, increasing the reliability of, you know, of the information we're obtaining back on the survey.
We didn't get an, we didn't get an answer here yet, so.
Well, I'm just waiting. Any more comments? Yes?
Um, I had the opportunity to talk with Bill just- Earlier this morning, thank you. And, uh, one of the things that we talked about was maybe even just putting a checkbox that would say other. Um, so there are some ways that we can differentiate between town residents that are responding versus other. Uh, another thing I, that Bill and I talked about is the website redevelopment. And there are some analytic tools that are, uh, available, or are being built in. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, but thi- this is an example, is that we've got that in our current website. Um, and we took a look at, you know, we had two hundred thousand respondents, um, over the, the life of the website. Sixty percent of those people that logged in went to the community services, and were looking at the information with regard to your arena and your pool schedules. So in addition to the survey information that you're gonna gar, that you're gonna gather, is that we're also developing the website in such a way to provide council with some analytics there as well.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Jessman?
No, I, he must have put that on. I didn't put it on. I don't know.
Bill's turning him on. All right, so council, you agree we do this? I don't know, do we need a motion, or it's in my report?
Yeah, so Madam Mayor, I can also, just because Director Clark is not here, I know that there is a task, like, there is a, um, group that is set up for the community, uh, need survey. Um, with council's motion, we could bring that back to them, so they could bring it back from administration.
Okay, well, I'll make the motion then, to, uh, have people that use High Level as a service area, work area, school area, to be able to fill out the survey. All in favor? Carried. Could I have someone move my report, please, if you don't have any question, do you have a question?
No, I'm gonna move your report.
Counselor Welkey, all in favor? Carried. Um, so, uh, committees with, uh, that the, uh, counselors are appointed to, Deputy Mayor?
So on April twelfth, I attended the special council meeting, on the fifteenth, um, C.A.O. candidate interview. Also on the fifteenth, Committee of the Whole, and then on the sixteenth, a second C.A.O. candidate interview.
Thank you. Counsel Anderson?
Uh, April eleventh, I attended the Emergency Advisory Committee, um, to do that was held here in Counselor Chambers. Um, very well represented by staff, um, and I thought a very good, uh, learning tool. Uh, so kudos to emergency services that set that up. Um, April twelfth, I attended a special council meeting. April fifteenth and sixteenth, the interviews with C.A., C.A.O. candidates. Uh, April twentieth, I also attended the Community Ketchup, um, where we served some three hundred hot dogs. Uh, and kudos to the, to the staff that set that up, I think they did a great job. And it was busy, Burnrick was very busy. April twenty-second, uh, Assessment Review Board. And also on April twenty-second, I attended the, the introduction of this interim C.A.O., Mr. Leaf. That's all I have.
Did you, uh, have an Assessment Review Board appeal?
No.
Oh, just a meeting?
No, of emergency-
Oh, oh, the presentation?
The presentation that Rodney and his crew set up.
Okay, any questions? Thank you. Counselor Lambert?
Um, on April ninth, I attended a Chamber of Commerce meeting, on, uh, the twelfth, also the special council meeting. And then on the thirteenth, um, helped set up and run the Connect and Elevate event with the chamber. Uh, it was a great success, I thought, you attended yourself, so yeah, it was good to see businesses come out, and, uh, see what other people are do, our other industries are doing, and have some, uh, some guest speakers there as well, which was really nice, and uh, yeah, to get the chamber back on its track, and, and go from there. Um, on April fifteenth, I also attended the interviews, uh, with the C.A.O. candidates, and then attended the staff update on the, was it the, Monday, the following Monday, I think? And then, on April twentieth, also attended the Community Ketchup, which was a, seemed to be a huge success as well. Nice to see everybody out there. Um, and then on April twenty-second, I attended the Assessment Review today, here, today.
Yeah, the Chamber Mixer was really, really nice. It was great to see you guys do it again.
We're hoping to do it at least, uh, once a quarter going forward.
We had a new business there, uh, uh, Dentures, that has opened a business, and she is from High Level, so that's, that was very nice to see her and her husband there. So thank you, Counsel Lambert, any questions? No? Thank you, Counsel Librian.
Dr. Phil, here again, sorry. Um, on April twelfth, I attended the special council meeting as well. April thirteenth was our, um, comic book sorting day at the library. And then the fifteenth and sixteenth, uh, for the C.A.O. interviews, the fifteenth, Community of Hoa. Seventeenth, had a High Level Library Board meeting, and the twentieth was Community Ketchup, which was a great event. Thanks again. That's it.
Thank you. I skipped over Counsel Jessman, sorry.
Okay. I have big shoulders. Um, on the twelfth, the special meeting, fifteenth, sixteenth, uh, the C.A.O. interview process that we followed through with. Uh, Friday, the nineteenth, we had the staff meeting here, or just a, yeah, brief staff meeting, to discuss, uh, where we're going into the future. Uh, the twentieth, the Ketchup, um, great, uh, great turnout, uh. Um, yeah, very well done, and the other thing was really cool to see, uh, are the people that are outside of the town also volunteering and being, uh, coming alongside us, so. I think that speaks, uh, loudly of people willing to put their time in and come along and support these events, so that's pretty cool. And then, uh, to, today, we had the twenty-second, we had this morning's introduction of our new C.A.O. The assessment at this evening, um, and that's it.
Thank you. Counselor Welkey?
April twelfth, I attended the special council meeting as well. April fifteenth, um, I believe that was a meet with the staff in the morning, uh, the town staff, and then C.A.O. interviews in the afternoon, Committee of the Whole in the evening. Uh, April sixteenth, uh, more C.A.O. interviews, and then today, um, the Come Meet Ron session this morning. I'm not sure if Mr. Leaf was here, but Ron was definitely in the house, so. And, um, then the assessment meeting prior to the council meeting tonight, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Could I have someone move Counselor, Council Committee meetings, please? Counsel Jessman, all in favor? Carried. Council's action list, I'm gonna ask this question again. Where's the fire agreement at?
Uh, we're still trying to- We're still trying to tie that down, we, planning for last week, there was a death in the community, and, uh, serious events that, uh, preceded that, so we did not get to it. Um, I was actually thinking about it today, just currently with current situation with wildfires and stuff, it might be difficult as we go forward, we'll have to, uh, work hard. I've been, I've reached out a few times to Bernard, to, to make it happen, and just have not had any return messaging from them. So, I'll continue to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, maybe actually, could link in with Ron and, and, uh, work as a team on that. We're trying to get a agreement with the local Denitah First Nation for our fire services, so. Between the three of us, yeah, we could work together. That's it.
Thank you.
Wish you had better news, but.
Uh, is there any questions on council report? See, none, could I- See, none. Could I have someone move? Counselor Ja-
Are we moving the action list, or are we?
Just the action list, yeah. Counselor Jessman moves that, all in favor? Carried. Upcoming events? If there's no questions, could I have a mover, please?
I'll move for information.
Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carried. Financial report.
Oh, Mayor and Counsel, if some-
Sorry, sorry, C A O, I usually go through you to director.
Director Phillips.
Would you please address counsel?
If there is any questions, counsel has any questions, so we've supplied the quarter four for twenty twenty-three and then quarter one for twenty twenty-four. A lot of the quarter four, you will notice that the reserve transfers, so we are doing our year and adjusting entries, so that is, it does show a lot of a surplus there at the end of it, but any questions, we're, I'm open to answer.
Have you recovered all the disaster recovery funds?
No, we haven't recovered everything. Our submission application is in with A M A for both both submissions, so one is the N W T. And then one is for Alberta assistance for Little Red River Cree Nation and, and area, so none of those funds have come in. I have done an update to A M A to just sit down and have a meeting with them because it does make up over one million dollars for twenty twenty-three, including our salaries, wages, et cetera, so they are very open to having conversations with us with the move forward processes to let us know where they are in their reviews, like previous experience with them. They do have three reviews for our submissions. This one is a little different and not as extensive because we were a third party helping and assisting with evacuations, but I can definitely bring a update back to counsel in the next meeting.
They're probably really busy.
They had a lot of submissions, and it's not even N W T. A M A did take on a lot when it came to the surrounding area last year, so.
Does anybody else have any questions? That town, I just have a question, sorry again. A net loss of two million in brackets, or is that surplus?
No, that's the surplus to do the reserve. Yes, all of the transfers haven't been done.
Nobody else? Okay, could I have someone move the report then? Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Ten for the first quarter report. Is there any questions? None? Okay. Could I have someone move the first quarter report then? Counsel Lebrion, all in favor? Carried. Old business, the spring cleanup. Do I have the wrong one? Is there nothing in here for spring cleanup?
Counsel.
Counsel Lambert.
So I'm not sure why there's nothing in the agenda for it, but I know last year we had budgeted, I think it was, was it fifty five hundred dollars? Do you know last year?
I apologize, I'm not aware, and I didn't know if anything was coming for that, it was just carried forward from the last committee of the whole.
Gotcha. So the year before that, I believe we budgeted thirty-five hundred, and then last year we updated the budget to fifty-five in order to cover five hundred dollars per zone for the cleanup. From what I understand, the chamber does have each one of those areas booked for cleanup.
Okay. That, so this was just an update, it wasn't a request?
Well, it was a request for the, to the funds for the, for the budget, but I seen in the budget, it was only in there for thirty-five hundred last year, but I'm pretty sure it was fifty-five.
And I believe that that was just, if, if counsel does need to add the extra two thousand, we can, we can make that adjustment in the budget. It was only thirty-five hundred for twenty twenty-four, yeah.
For this, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty-three, it was fifty-five?
Yes, yeah, and that was due to our res- like the decision to zone out and do the donations of those, those different areas.
Wasn't a go-forward, it was a single motion for that year only?
From my understanding, it wasn't carried forward to twenty twenty-four, but if it is counsel's decision, we can do that carry forward.
So just for reference here, last year, we actually didn't sell all of the, or not sell, but we didn't use all of the funds. I think we only used maybe two or three of the, or cleaned up two or three of the zones. That's why this year, we're a lot more proactive on, on getting them booked.
Okay.
So I think out of the fifty-five hundred, maybe fifteen hundred was used. That it's all requested this year? Yes.
Was there, was there something in the committee of the whole?
Just to bring it up.
Oh.
Oh, but we were supposed to discuss tipping fees for the landfill, if we were gonna open it up for a week or not. We were supposed to find out what, what the cost of that was for last year.
Who was gonna find it out?
I don't know. Next week. Actually supposed to start on Saturday, the twenty-seventh to May the fourth.
So we don't have time to, we have to make a decision tonight.
Just wait. Do, do you recall anything in the notes about who was going to check with the landfill?
I think we were just gonna look at the, what it cost last year.
Yeah.
So, Madam Mayor and Counsel, it was part of administration, so it was going to be C A, previous C A O. I could, I could send you guys our breakdown from last year, so looking at everything we did for the cleanup in twenty twenty-three, it does look like we only did the two, or the two zone donations that we did for the chamber. So for tipping fees for that week, if you just give me a minute, I can bring it back into the meeting. I just need to grab the numbers.
So counsel, are you fine with the fifty-five hundred for this year for the zones? Seems none of it, they only used fifteen hundred last year. And they've pre-sold their, their zones? Deputy Mayor?
I think it's important to get the entire town done, so I guess it would be a carryover if we didn't use all the funds last year. I don't think we have to necessarily allocate anything extra this year. It would just be a carry forward from last year.
So is that your motion?
Yes.
So could you put in there that Deputy Mayor moves that counsel give the chamber fifty-five hundred for their, how many zones?
Eleven zones.
Eleven zones?
Yep.
Of cleanup, spring cleanup?
And also that we would cover the cost of any tipping fees?
For leaving the or so that people can go to the landfill for a week?
From April twenty-seventh to the May fourth.
April twenty-seventh to May fourth? Moved by the Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carried. I think we were gonna talk to each.
I think we were supposed to look in to see if they were including that last year or not.
Okay, so an update on the town website. C A O.
Oh. I had a
Bill.
Bill? Can you?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. This is just an overview of what we're doing for the website refresh for this year. We're expected to have that done by the middle of June. And the background of this briefing note just kind of gives you an idea of what some of the process was that we've been doing so far.
Is there questions for? So there was a refresh from twenty twenty that we never did.
That's correct. We are entitled to a refresh every four years, but the last one wasn't done, so we were almost eight years behind, so.
So twenty twenty-four is our refresh date. Is there any questions? Do you have them?
That was my own question.
Oh. Okay, I guess there's no questions. Thank you for the briefing note.
I do have one more thing that I would like to just mention very briefly on the discussion about the community assessment survey. So I have been part of that project. It's a community services project, but I've been part of it as part of promotion. Barring a discussion that we had on social media today, we've actually, we were in the process of putting together some kind of plan to see how we could get people from outside of the region to be able to participate. Director Clark isn't here today, so we're not able to discuss it with her. But part of the issue is that in terms of the community services programming that is in the survey, of course, everybody uses that, but the other departments are also represented in there, and some of those are not like if you're not a ratepayer, they don't really affect you directly. So like how we deal with roads, my, all of my questions around our communications policy, obviously my primary audience is the town of high level itself. And we don't have a good way to tell, like we can't verify where people live, who's filling these out, that kind of thing, so our focus has kind of been doing it like in person as much as possible and just having those discussions with people. Like all surveys, we just, we just lack the ability to have like any kind of solid security, right? So anybody could really be filling them out from anywhere for any reason. Granted, it's a long survey, so. And the way that we set it up, it's less likely to be attacked by bots, for example, it's not like a survey monkey as a PDF fillable. We're not really worried about that too much. But, yeah, like we, what we're kind of talking about was like presenting that information with like a caveat that here's, here's what we were able to put together. But just be aware that we don't have the kind of security required to say, like this person specifically lives here or this person lives somewhere else and they have an axe to grind and they, you know, they filled it out with bad intentions or whatever. We have no way to, to filter that stuff, so. But we were gonna have that discussion tomorrow. I was obviously unprepared for it to be brought up at council tonight, so. Yeah, that's all I wanted to mention about that.
Great, thank you.
Just a question or, or just a discussion on that. So just something to think about, I guess, with the assessment, or not the assessment, sorry, the survey. There are a lot of people in the community that work here and own businesses here, so the survey may entail to them a little bit just because they do work here every day and they might only live five minutes out of town, but they're still considered a county resident. So just something to think about in regards to them still being a ratepayer as a business owner, right?
Thank you for the comment, Counsel Lambert. That, that definitely is something we've identified. And we've listed ratepayers as like anybody who owns a house or a business in town. Pretty much those are the people that we are most interested in hearing from because, like I mentioned, a lot of that stuff is gonna be you know, it, it may inform where municipal taxes are being directed and stuff, so that's kind of our, where we're sitting with it.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Lebrion.
Is there a way for us to put out a, like a condensed version of the survey where we could just have the, sort of the FCCSS programming and stuff that may affect people from the county, but leave out the stuff that's specifically for ratepayers?
Thank you for the question, Counsel Lebrion. There definitely would be a way to do that. I, I really just have to speak to Director Clark and see what direction she wants to go with all this, because I mean, like I said, this all came up kind of today, and we haven't had a chance to kind of go past our initial discussions. And we formulated a plan of attack and we were like, great, we'll talk to Jenna as soon as she gets in, so we'll be dealing with it tomorrow probably.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so twelve, three, briefing note for the fire department.
Director Schmidt.
Thank you, C A O Leaf, Madam Mayor. So at the, really at the meeting, counsel, after discussion with regards to an in-camera item with regards to the fire department response in March, we were asked to bring back options and a report regarding fire department staffing. With the timing of the budget passing tonight, we brought this report back to talk about some of the things that are happening and some, some recommendations for move forward for the department. No secret, the fire department's been struggling with recruitment in the past year or so. There's been, we've discussed it with the council, but we're aware there's been a large decline in volunteer firefighters across the province up there, across the country, up to about thirty percent, and high level's no, not immune to that. You know, number of factors of that, training requirements of, of our volunteer members or paid-on-call members when they come in. Other local pressures that have been happening within the community and competitiveness with other volunteer groups facing similar challenges in town. So the department has done a lot of different initiatives with regards to recruitment. We have, the move to paid-on-call has increased the amount of members in terms of turnout after hours for, for, you know, fire events and alarm calls and motor vehicle collisions and so on. We've done a recruitment push directly by members, just word of mouth, social media campaigns on the town website and the town Facebook page, newspaper articles stating we need volunteers, ads in the paper, even banners and declining on vehicles, looking for paid-on-call members. We have a Q R code that goes direct to our recruitment page. All those things are in place, and it has only resulted in about two more recruits in the past four to five months. Those recruits are still undergoing training. They were actually gracious enough to take time off of their work, and they've been working through with our new seasonal staff this last two weeks, and they'll be completely response-ready by the end of this week. So at least we, we have a couple more. Although we had a resignation today for one of our volunteers who, or sorry, yesterday, who, because of kids at home, just unable to commit the time, so we're, we gain two and lose one, and that's kind of how things are operated with our paid-on-call members. On the provincial side, the province does nothing to assist with recruitment, so there's no incentives, there's no anything out there on provincially to assist other than, you know, information from Melbourne Fire Chiefs Association on, on recruitment, you know, just general information. Federally, the, the federal government just passed an increase to the volunteer firefighter recruitment program, or sorry, tax incentive, which moves it from about three hundred fifty to seven hundred dollars, basically in the pocket of a volunteer paid-on-call member, as long as they meet two hundred hours of service. So that two hundred hours of service is sometimes difficult to meet for some volunteer members, but they have to have that to, to, to meet that. Other options that counsel asked me to investigate, the town of Coldale did a firefighter tax rebate program in twenty twenty. It has had some success in Coldale. They give a two thousand dollar a year tax break to businesses who let their firefighters respond to calls during their business hours. In some discussions, looking at the, the demographics of our current paid-on-call volunteer firefighters, very few of them can leave work anyway, so we don't feel that that, you know, that really would be super effective. You know, one of our members are working in service industries where they can't leave, you know, a restaurant during the day or they can't leave, they're working in healthcare or in the mills. That's the bulk of our paid-on-call members, and they just can't leave work while they're at work. And, and that's the reality that we have, especially with short staffing in many of our businesses in high level. The other part of Coldale's incentive was a thousand dollar The other part of Coldale's incentive was a $1,000 tax break on residential tax bills to homeowners who volunteer to the fire department. My discussion was with Coldale and, and a discussion with other departments who've tried to implement that. It is difficult to manage and it's not equitable for our volunteer firefighters who rent, which is a, which is a, you know, a large percentage actually of our, of our firefighters. So also, that was brought up at the April 8th meeting was the medical co-response program and how that affects our recruitment. And it is the opinion of the department that while medical co-response does have a, a big impact on our call volume, the steps that we've taken in the last couple of years, where 90% of our medical calls are actually managed by our full-time staffing, has very little effect on our, on our volunteerism. The, conversely, we have been involved in medical co-response for well over 20 years as a community, and to reduce that service level to the community would have a great impact, especially considering the amount of times our EMS service times out and the amount of times we're now first responding to scenes and, and conducting treatment. So we don't feel that, that that is a viable option, and we, we just feel that it'll, it'll negatively affect the community. You know, I put an example in the report here, you know, simply recoding our calls and saying we're not going to certain delta events, you know, does have an impact. And, and a lot of that is just the way phone calls are made into 911 and the dispatcher's code things based on the information they have at the time isn't always accurate. So that does result in a lot of calls where we go to responses where we're not needed, but it also results in calls where we go to responses that are undercoded. As an example, we had a couple of weeks ago where we, we're seven minutes ahead of the ambulance in a cardiac arrest call in, in the downtown core. And that was coded as a delta for just a regular man-down call. So the department as it stands is still, you know, from a paid-on-call perspective, we would need at least 10 more paid-on-call firefighters to be fully effective. That being said, if we had 10 applications tomorrow, it takes about six months to, six to eight months to get them now response-ready completely after we go through applications, interviews, and then their training, unless they're able to commit a couple of weeks of, of direct training. So really, administration feels to get us through the, the crux of this right now is, is looking at staffing options. So there is a couple of options with that, the work experience program that we currently have with the four seasonals. Those, those members are essentially response-ready now. We're just tying up their training this week. We could extend them to a full year-round program and just rotate them every year. While that does extend the current staffing to a longer period, it really doesn't remedy the situation that we face in the summertime, where the WUI team, as, as we discussed, are gone more and more. They've been gone every weekend now with the exception of one since March 1st out teaching. That is their requirement under their provincial program. And now that wildfire season has started to heat up, we're expecting deployment requests to come in. And as they're provincially funded, we're not supposed to turn those down. So, so that does leave, you know, the four seasonals that we have with the current paid-on-call staff and myself and the deputy chief. And, but our paid-on, our, our work experience program members, we're planning on splitting those four into two shifts. So we have basically seven-day-a-week coverage during the day, but two on at a time with the duty officer and our other one full-time staff member, so. So it does provide some additional revenue due to employments that are offset, that offset the cost of service delivery. So there is some offsets to the cost of that program. But again, it, the extending this to a one-year program does allow for more staffing in the winter. It really doesn't solve the summer issue. The other option, which arguably is a more expensive option, but it is the option that administration is recommending, is adding some additional full-time staffing. So the cost, which is already reflected in the draft budget for 2024, is $150,000 for 2024 and $300,000 in 2025, not including the revenue offsets that I'll discuss in a second. So the additional three more staff, which would include one supervisor, would basically provide year-round coverage and mirror the WUI team. So in the winter, that it gives them adequate rest time. They work four days on and four days off on 12-hour shifts. And then nighttime is when our, you know, they're either on call or we have our paid-on-calls filling in those gaps. And then obviously, when a structured fire or another fire occurs, the same occurs now where everybody goes. And that gives us the surge capacity that we would need. It also allows the WUI team to fully meet their provincial commitments, because if we had an additional four staff mirroring that team, when the WUI team is tired like they were last year, we'd be able to put them on call in high level and then flip the other team out as a WUI response, because we would train them to the same standard. So it allows us to keep our commitment up, but also allows that revenue stream back into the community. So some of the additional benefits to that, to that option, the Fire Underwriter Survey that we've discussed with Council back in December, that would go great lengths to getting us to achieve those additional grades in, in insurance grading for the community, which would eventually result in some insurance savings. I do need to correct my report on, on this. While I said it was approximately $375,000 a year in residential assurance, it's actually more on the commercial industrial side where we'll see the savings. I finally got a call back from Fire Underwriter Survey this afternoon, and they said where we would see the insurance savings on the residential side would be 2% to 5%. It would be far greater on the commercial industrial side. So while that doesn't have a direct effect on the town's budget, overall in the community, you start seeing some, some cost savings. So it's, it's minor on the residential, but it's more, more pronounced on the commercial and industrial. I already kind of discussed revenue generation. On the WUI side, it does allow us to keep up with our deployments where, you know, a single 14-day deployment usually brings in about $100,000 in revenue to the town. But the fire department also turned down over $70,000 in training requests last year based on our training fees, which would essentially pay for almost one of those three positions. And we just turned it down because we had no capacity. So having those full-time people in the station, especially one as a, as a trainer, gives us some more flexibility to provide that contract training. Our training that's happening with the Denny right now, as an example, they've already verbally asked if we could do more training for them on a contract basis, because they need to get their services up and running. So we're already having those discussions. Finally, inspection frequencies, two of the things that we're missing in regards to the Fire Underwriter Survey to be successful in the public fire protection classification is more regular inspections and pre-fire planning. So this would give us the staffing to be able to accomplish that in a more efficient manner. Because during the day, they would, you know, be out in the community doing those inspections of pre-fire plans and key businesses. So we already have that planning done ahead of time. Duty officer rotation, currently during wildfire season, it's myself and our deputy chief that rotate one week on, one week off on duty officer. This would give us a sec, a third supervisor to do that rotation when the WUI team's busy, because right now we only have that third officer to do a duty officer rotation when the WUI team's not busy. The last two pieces go hand in hand. So this, this option with the additional crew gives us seven days a week daytime coverage. So the response time out of the station, expected response time out of the station from page out is 90 seconds. So 12 hours a day, you have a very much more increased response time by the first initial crew. So what that does is, if it allows us to achieve, the 10-minute response time is outlined in the Alberta Building Code 90% of the time, which we're currently at 50%, which we feel we could achieve with the staffing, that actually relaxes building codes. So that allows for different, different construction methods within housing. As an example, we got a request from the school division just two weeks ago asking us to give them a response letter guaranteeing 10-minute, 10-minute response time within the 90 percentile, and we said no. And they've had to go back to the drawing board for their school division development, because they were actually basing it because they thought we were able to achieve the 10-minute response time. Our current average is 11.4. So, so that's the, well, it is a more expensive option. We look at it as more of an investment in terms of community safety. There's no doubt that paid-on-call firefighters are always going to be a part of our service, and that's never going to change. There's no way we could do 24-hour-a-day coverage. It, we would have to double that, the staffing that we're proposing, and that's just not in the cards. But we are in a unique position as a community that has that program that does provide a revenue stream to offset those costs, as well as with our, you know, other abilities to do training in the region. We feel that we can do this fairly efficiently within, within the town budget. And that's my report.
Questions? Deputy Mayor.
So what do you think the possibilities are that these three additional paid firefighters would just come from the volunteers? Which would just leave us at the same number?
Very low. All of our volunteer firefighters currently have other careers that I don't think they're really looking at, looking at that option. So I don't feel that that's really a play right now. I don't think that's an issue.
And then if we continue the work experience program, that actually has four people here on a yearly basis, right?
So yes. So if we continue the work experience, yeah, that would leave us four, yeah, year-round. So we would rotate them on a one-year contract, right? So we're paying them, you know, a much lower wage as work experience students. Again, it doesn't allow the extra surge capacity in the summer, so that's why we said it's not the best option. One of the other options, I guess, for Council to digest, which I didn't put in the report, was you could have more work experience students during the summer and then, you know, you could do it that way as well. But then we're continually rotating, so we don't have that experience level, which is one of the, the downsides of that.
So why can't we offer, like, I like the Coldale model. I think we do need volunteers. We can't continuously grow this department. We are already at $1.4 million operating. We can't continue to, to put more people into this department. If the WUI team goes, there's four people, they're here till the 2025. If those other three people are tied to them, that's seven people.
No, I, I guess maybe I, I misexplained that, Madam Mayor. So we wouldn't send them away as well as the WUI team. So the, the, so it's not to have more capacity to send more people out of town.
No, 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 no. You said tie it to the WUI team, like if, if the WUI team goes, then those people go.
No, no, that's not what I meant. So, so having those extra people here, that if the WUI team comes back from a deployment and they're asked to redeploy again, then we can flip the other team out and leave the other WUI team here, so we have coverage. So we would never send them both at the same time, that, if I, if you understand what I'm saying.
No, I'm not. I, what I'm saying is if the WUI team of the province says you're done, 2025, you said that team would be here to offset the WUI team, right, in your report?
No, that's, so, so the tie to the WUI program and why, I guess I did not explain that, I apologize. So why I've put in the resolution to tie it to the WUI program funding is because if we ever lose the WUI program funding, then we would have to have, obviously, a complete revisit of our staffing model, because then it's not sustainable.
I'd like to revisit our staffing model right now and really call for, for volunteers. I do like the incentives that Coldale offers. We've never offered our firefighters, and you say that the people, it wouldn't help the people that are here. Well, it might help people that own houses that want to come out. Same with, with the, the fire, or the fire chiefs wanted 10,000 from, from the federal government. They got six. Why can't the Alberta Fire Chiefs lobby our Alberta government for 4,000 to reach that 10,000? Like, I mean, there's options here instead of throwing more and more to get more paid people.
Understand that, and, and, don't get me wrong, that's not the aim. We, we will always have a paid-on-call volunteer service. The reality is, it's not sustainable. We have zero response during the day right now, like maybe one.
Yeah, but that's because the WUI team was here. We used to have people in our town office that were allowed to go during the day.
Correct, and that was the only people that responded were town staff.
Yeah.
So unless we hire more people who work at the town that can respond during the day, that's still not correcting the problem.
Hey, so how, how much do you get for the WUI team? 500,000?
Correct.
Do they use every cent of that?
Yes, they do. That, that budget is, is pretty set with the province.
I still think that we need volunteers and we need to offer incentives. And, and I get that we don't have any volunteers. This WUI team was not supposed to cost us any money, but it's now going to cost us money because we can't get volunteers. That's, that's the problem that I have. And now, so now we're putting, you, you, you talk about offsetting, offsetting the budget with the money they bring in, but we never talk expenses. Like, we put brush trucks out there and the tenders and all those things. So what are the expenses? Those are things that were supposed to be provided to us, and we've been providing them ourselves.
I'm, I'm not understanding your comment about that they were supposed to provide it.
Well, that's, your first, your, when you first told us about the WUI team and the province doing it, they were going to supply the trucks.
In 2016, correct. That was changed by the time that we, we program got bid on in 2019.
But, but I just, yeah, like I, I think, okay, we need a couple people, so we hire a couple this year. But I think they go away in the fall, because we just can't afford it, Rodney. Like, it's getting more expensive every year. I just, that's my personal feelings. I think there's ways that we can attract, we can attract people. And we haven't tried those options. So, and do they get those $6,000 because they're paid on-call, or do you have to be a volunteer?
No, so they, they would qualify for paid-on-call. We're confirming that with the new rollout with the federal government. They do qualify for that subsidy as long as they volunteer 200 hours a year. So that, that's the requirement. It's not $6,000 in their pockets, $6,000 tax credit. So, so it results in about, you know, $700 back.
Yeah. Okay. Is there any other, oh, I guess I better shut up. Who is first? Council Anderson, I'll stop at the end.
Okay, so as I understand it, these three additional people would roll out. So if the WUI team comes back after two weeks and they're timed out and we're getting, and we're given another call-out notice, these other three people would take, go over, out in their place?
Correct, and then we have the WUI team on-call here. So we basically could flip them. It's an option, right?
Right. Okay, so I, I don't see that as an option, because now we're, we're basically supplying seven staff members to commit to the WUI team on a $500,000 budget. And I realize that it's a flip around and a, and a rotate, but now the town is having to pay full-time for three more staff. And I, I really do believe that we need to look seriously at, at all other options before we start looking at paying for more full-time staff.
So I don't, I don't disagree, and just to clarify, so how that billion would work. So if, if, if that scenario did come to play, then the province pays for that staffing, because that staffing is billed out. So while I agree they're not being paid for while they're sitting in a station, they're being paid for while they're responding to those events. I'm not saying that that's going to happen every time in terms of like a continuous deployment. That, that's not our reason for asking for the staffing. The reason we're asking for it is while they're gone, we don't have enough people here to cover. So, so if we were in a position like we were last year where our team was out, they come home, they rest, they go back out, they're to the point of exhaustion, we have the ability to say, okay, you're staying here, you're on-call, we'll take these other four and send them out, and we still have the same number of staffing here and the same number out. And then that staffing is being covered by provincial revenues, because we bill on top while those staffing is out. We also bill for our apparatus, we bill for our trailer, so, you know, there's, there's, there's. So, you know, there's, there's, there's revenue on top. That's the revenue stream that we received in last year that resulted in the department having a $500,000 surplus after we paid for all of the department operations last year. So that's, that's what I'm trying to get council to understand, that it's, there is offsets. And I understand the need to recruit more volunteer firefighters, but we're really having a tough time doing that. So I don't know what other options are there. We can do incentives, but it doesn't fix the problem right now.
So, I'll just for, to continue with my question now. So we hire these three full-time firefighters. So what's the training then that we have to pay as a town, uh, to get them up to the standards of the wooi team? Uh, what's the cost of the town then for that? Because that would not be covered by the provincial government, because the provincial government's already trained their four people.
The, the, the people we would hire would already be qualified to their NFPA standards. The wildland training we do in-house, we already, um, we already work with Alberta Wildfire in terms of training wildfire requirements. Um, so we don't feel that that would be a major issue. But as an example, one of our, um, one of our students that we hired right now already has those wildfire qualifications. So, you know, there are people out there that already have those qualifications, and those would be the people we seek. In terms of, the only other qualification that they require was the, the wooi members course, which is taught by our team, so there's no cost to that, because they would be taught that while they're here. So there's not a, a big cost in training, uh, those people, other than their wages that we'd be paying them during the day.
I, I would like to see some numbers put to that.
Okay.
Counselor Lambert.
Um, yeah, I think I'm in the same boat here with, uh, Counselor Anderson and the mayor. Um, you know, I think we need to exercise all of our options here before we go to this. And I think Counselor Jessman is the one who said it before, is we, we keep throwing money at this, and, you know, every year it's another ask, another ask. I mean, last fall, we provided one new full-time member, someone that was a part of the, the student program last year. So that's five full-time, including the wooi team, and then plus another one with the deputy chief. And then we added, we went from two summer students this year to four, so now we have, it's at 10 people full-time. I think that's, you know, it's, it's definitely, you know, you, you mentioned the other things too about having full-time staff, or, sorry, during the day, there's, I said 90% of their calls are, I think they're taking most of the calls during the day, and then you're not getting any response from any of the volunteers. Well, I think if you have full-time staff there, you're not going to get response from the volunteers, because they know that there's someone there, they're getting paid for it. And I, and I, you know, that, that was a problem that's always been happening even before. Um, even when I was on the department, that was an issue, because you'd have people from the town responding. You know, people used to think, okay, well, then I'm not going to respond, because I know there's people going already. Um, you know, I'm not sure what the solution to that would be, but I don't think adding more staff is going to contribute to more volunteers giving up their time to come out. It's, if, if anything, it'll, it'll, it'll discourage them from coming. As for, um, one other thing I had brought up too, with the, you know, the, the rates and all that stuff on, on insurance rates, I think that is definitely something for us to consider, considering that if it's only commercial, businesses that are, are commercial, I guess, properties that are going to be affected by, you know, it's the residents that, at the end of the day, are the ones who help us make the decisions here. Something to consider, I think.
Counselor Welkey.
What, um, what type of confirmation do we have that the tax break incentive for businesses just wouldn't work in this community?
We don't really have a confirmation. I mean, I guess the experience that we have right now is that we only have, so we have 13 or 14 paid-on-call members right now. Um, and even in the past, um, when we had more paid-on-call members, very few of them ever could leave work. So currently, right now, out of the 14 we have, only one can leave work, and it's only during a major fire, right? So it may, like, gets on what we call a second page out, all call, uh, for members.
Has there been any engagement though with the business community on that?
Not directly, no.
Um, I'm going to just speak on behalf of myself as a business owner. It just kind of gave me some thoughts on a different method of recruitment. And I know perhaps two of my employees would be interested in this. Um, traditionally, being a member of a volunteer fire department in a community, I think, is, is like a huge source of, um, pride and commitment to the community. And actually, a lot of people would, would really enjoy doing it. And I, as a business owner, especially if there was a tax break, would also be incentivized to encourage my own employees to participate in this, because it also, um, if you talk to business owners, we're looking for rec, uh, retention, um, of our own employees. And if they get engaged in the community, that's almost a sure way that they may, they may stick around. And, and being a member of the fire department, I, I, I think has always been like a pinnacle of organizations to be involved with, you know, if you want to really give back to your community. So, um, perhaps, you know, talking with the chamber and even like myself, I would, I would be willing to look at how I, uh, how I, as a business owner, could help in the process of bringing volunteers in, because it would also benefit me, not only just the tax break, but it would benefit me too. And I, and, you know, I guess you'd have to be in a business where you can, you can let people go. But if we look at it as these employees may stick around and, and actually really enjoy themselves here, if they're a member of something, then that helps the business community out too. So that's just another way of looking at it. I, uh, I already know, yeah, like, two or three people that work for me that I could approach it in that method as a business owner, that might be successful. So I agree, I can't quite endorse the okaying of the new, uh, three new fully-paid members. I'd like to, uh, I'd like to explore the, you know, the, like, better recruitment processes for the paid-on-call volunteers.
Counselor Jessman.
Thank you. I, you know, I, I'm not going to go into what has been already talked about. Just a few comments I would like to make. Running a fire service for a community is not easy. It's difficult, and, uh, there's many, many challenges out there. And so, you know, when we were, uh, presented this, I did, I did a little bit of research, and I know the mayor back earlier on did the same. And it's, uh, you know, you see, you hear and see the same across the province and, and the little communities and stuff like that. But if we were to go down this road, I, I think we would be the only smaller community in the province with this many full-time, uh, firefighters, which, uh, which, uh, would be very difficult. Um, just a few comments, you know, with these increased people, uh, you know, there's an increased needs for them, whether it's, uh, housing needs, like, uh, whether it's transportation needs, whether it's equipment needs. And so we don't see those, you know, I think you'd have to do a more in-depth review of that. And it just, there's bigger and bigger, uh, demands on the overall department. You know, I say this all the time, we're just getting bigger and bigger, and, and it just increases tenfold all across the department. Like I say, from equipment to vehicles to, uh, office space to fire department space. And we, you know, I, uh, we end up having to rent space to store stuff in the wintertime and stuff like that. So those are all additional costs that we don't get returns on, that we don't see, but can add up and, or could be, uh, quite scary. I think the other thing is we have to look at the options to entice more people in a more robust way. Other than, um, you know, looking at what isn't working in other areas, maybe look at what works for here and, uh, look at it in, in a bigger multitask. You know, I really like the idea of, uh, giving the incentive, a tax break on people's taxes or, uh, and I get it, this, this creates its own challenge, more work that you have to track that, you have to track their volunteer hours and all that. But again, going back to building a more robust, uh, incentive, uh, uh, options, uh, like what Jan is saying, look at them all and include it in one bigger, uh, option to the town for business owners, to volunteers, um, and, uh, come back with, uh, something like that. But, uh, those are just comments I have to make. It's very difficult for me to support this. Um, I, you know, again, it's difficult, uh, running a, a department. Uh, we see the challenges growing year after year after year with all that's going on in our world. But, uh, you know, I keep going back to the province has to step up and start kicking more into, uh, smaller communities and what we do for emergency services. And the more we give, the less they have to do that. So, uh, you know, there comes a point when, you know, enough's enough for me, and I think we're at that point for me right now. That's all.
Counselor Lebrion.
I, I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but I feel the same way as, as the mayor, and I, I agree very strongly with what Jan was saying. I would like to see us exhaust these tax incentives to the fullest before we start going any further down this road. I think that with the proper incentives, we could at least get some more involvement from our local volunteers, so I would like to see that tried first.
Deputy Mayor.
So I think council's message is kind of clear. Um, but these, even these suggested changes aren't going to happen overnight, and we need some immediate relief. So I'd be prepared to move alternative number two, that we extend the casual program on a one-time basis for a year to allow the department to investigate, to offer some of these other incentives. So they're going into next year that we would have maybe another avenue to attack. My big concern was like my first question, that we add these three positions and then three volunteers, and we're in no better shape than we are right now. So it's a temporary measure, it'd be on a one-year basis, and, uh, allow administration time to, uh, come back with some other options and investigate the things we've been talking about.
This is called choking? My first opportunity. To the deputy mayor's point, um, a lot of what you've been talking about, and the comments I'm going to make are based on about a 45 to 60-minute conversation that Director Schmidt and I had this afternoon. So there, I'm drawing on a lot of other experience that I've had outside of high level. One of the, the concerns I had with regard to how this was presented tonight was that we were, you're missing, or the policy discussions that I believe the council needs to have are absent from this. One of the examples that I used when I talked with Rodney was I said, you're assuming that council's supportive of the 10-minute, or, uh, sorry, what was it, 10-minute, 90% of the time. Council's not obligated to do that. As he alluded to, there are consequences that come in terms of building code, spatial separations. Now you're into, what's your land use ballot going to look like? This is, I'm not an uncomplicated, um, situation. Do you really, um, want to, when, when you talk about, when you talk about wooi, this is really a provincial system that because of where high level is located geographically makes sense. But high level doesn't have that much of a wooi risk, um, anymore that warrants the investment that you've got. But you're in a partnership with the province right now, where you've committed to doing this, and we're two months now into the, the fire sea, the provincial fire season. So the, the reason that I'm, I'm framing it that way is I really believe that there's two questions in front of council. The first one is, how are you going to address the fire season that's going to take us through until the end of October? You're not committed to doing that, but if you're, if the deputy mayor's motion fails, there's some very quick communication that needs to occur, um, with the province with regard to the capacity, because, um, I believe, uh, a number of counselors talked about, your first and foremost responsibilities as a council is to the residents and businesses within your corporate limits. Some of what you're engaging in is, are expenses that are being borne outside of that. And to the comment about, and the province needs to ante up, the province has needed to ante up in emergency services for over 25 years. You're into medical first response. You're not obligated to do that. Let me qualify that for the lawyer in the room. Because you have historically been providing that service, to step back from that service is probably a six-month community, um, awareness. There's going to be legal opinions on what's the best way to go about that. So there are service-level changes that you can implement, but at best, you're going to be talking about January 1 of 2025. You have the, the question, which I think is appropriately, um, placed, which is, you're, you don't have the volunteers in place. It takes three to six months, um, for you to get one volunteer to the place where you can put bunker gear on them and actively have them fighting, other than being a hose monkey, which is what I was. So there are a number of conversations that council needs to have and administration needs to have, that we can bring back. But the question before you tonight, as you're considering the budget, is, are you prepared to augment the service that, uh, your fire chief is telling you? These are the resources he needs, given his current, um, manpower and resourcing.
So the deputy mayor has a motion on the table. And we are in a position where we do need people, and exactly what you have said is all true. And, uh, I, I, and our obligation is to high level. And that's first and foremost in my mind. And if adding three people helps us protect high level, then I'm for it, for this six-month period.
And my comment is, the system that you're currently funding and that you're being asked to fund is providing service to the broader community. Now, you've got mutual aid agreements and all those other sorts of things. That's where I'm saying, this is not uncomplicated, and you're not going to address it. And we could, when's the Alder's game done? You know, we could probably spend another two, three hours. There's a point in time where we're going to be just dealing and asking council, administratively, we'll be providing you with conjecture. Um, that's not a good basis for council to make a decision. So my recommendation is, and I'm not saying to support or not to support the deputy mayor's motion, but, um, following that, I think that I would recommend that council, direct administration, to come back, because you're not committed to the medical services, you're not committed to, that you can re, view some of your mutual aid. But this becomes a far bigger discussion than whether you're going to fund three positions or not. But it does allow you to have the conversation is, what are the emergency services that council wished to see occur within your, uh, the town? Or is it within the response area of your fire department, your medical services? I, again, we can broaden this conversation considerably beyond the, uh, the options that are before you this evening.
Do you want to make a friendly amendment?
The three positions, it's extending the casuals for one year, just to get us through this, so.
That's alternative two.
Is there any discussions on extending, what is that, 150 or 140? 80. Counselor Lambert.
Just, uh, something to consider with, uh, extending the position, it doesn't, doesn't affect or do anything over the summer.
What do you mean? What do you mean?
Like if we, what I'm saying is that over the summer is what we're all of a sudden talking about, now we're worried about. If we extend the summer students to a year, it doesn't affect what's happening this summer. That, that the staffing level still stays the same. So to me, it doesn't make any sense. Because then we have three additional people here in the wintertime to, to do.
So are you saying we should hire three additional people?
No, I think we should exercise all our options like we've talked about.
If I could ask Director Schmidt, based on the, as you understand the motion, what, um, will you be able to do in terms of response?
I mean, I guess that's a tough question, because a lot of it depends on the turnout of our current paid-on calls. So on, you know, we still have never missed a call, and I can't say that we ever will not miss a call, but I, you know, at this point, we're holding the line with the staffing that we have right now. I mean, so, um, you know, C O is correct. I mean, we're committed to the provincial program until March of 2026. That's the agreement we signed, and, uh, that funding is there. The, um, and again, that brings in revenue to offset these other, these other programs. But, um, the, uh, it turns. But, um, the, uh, in terms of what can we respond to right now, I, I guess it depends on the day. You know, you know, on a, during the day, we currently have one or two members turn out. And, uh, they make an effort if it's something major, because right now we only page calls when we need, during the day, when we need our paid-on calls to respond. We don't page anything else because we don't want to, like, we're trying to reduce the burden on them to hopefully increase the ability to respond while they're, while, you know, so they know when it's paged, they're needed. Um, so yeah, in terms of response, um, I, I guess it's a hard, I guess it's a hard question to answer. What can we respond to now? We're currently managing our contracts, but we're managed and we're managing our, our response to the community. Um, but we're one multiple event call day where we have multiple calls going at the same time. That's where we definitely run into trouble or when we have a structured fire where we need, you know, more than, uh, you know, more than two crews. Uh, we had a structured fire this weekend. We filled two full trucks. Um, so, you know, we do have good turnouts when we need it, but it's not all guaranteed.
So you're training the Dene Fire Department right now?
Correct.
So how long would that take to train with them?
My discussions with Mr. Bolio today that they're a year from full response. But they have asked us to assist them in accelerating their training. But I don't have the capacity to do that fully without committee and staff.
Well, we're in a pickle then. Yes, go ahead, Counsel.
So, so if we receive new volunteers at our own department today, the general thought is six months they're fully ready. With the Dene firefighters receiving some training and what, what, what makes it a year for them to be ready versus if you had your own volunteers here?
Um, so, I mean, so the difference is, is they're establishing a fire department. So they, they have a lot of other things to do besides just train their volunteers, right? They have no dispatch system. They have no, um, SOPs in place. They just got their gear. They're still recruiting people. Um, so, you know, we're, I'm, I'm actually pretty happy we're working very closely with Mr. Bolio now. And, and I think that's, that's definitely a benefit. And we had some good discussions this weekend about, you know, the ability to back each other up when they get to this point. But, you know, the reality is they need to get themselves organized first. And I think with assistance, we might be able to accelerate that, but, um.
Could they not?
That, that, that was his estimate. That's what he told me was that they, they figured they would, they would be ready by this time next year is kind of what the discussion was this weekend.
So would there not be some sort of mechanism for them to fully sign on with our department? Um, knowing that they'll get their training faster and be ready to integrate into their own faster as well? Like, these are individuals that are already interested. Um, it, I mean, besides perhaps the barriers that we've seen in the past with, um, you know, them, you know, very committed to their, you know, their independent department, which I, you know, I'm not discrediting that at all and I, I'm all for it. But it seems like there, there should be a way to help us and them even through, even in terms of getting them, their firefighters up to, you know, fully established training, which would also help them in their own departments quicker.
Absolutely, yeah.
There should be a mechanism there to, to, uh, actually fully be engaged with our department. Um.
It's probably a bigger discussion with, you know, the Dene administration, but.
Right. But with the, with the, I guess, the renewed cooperation, this is yet then another example of looking at all options to get, to get the numbers up. And then at the same time, you know, we will be exploring our other in-town recruitment strategies, um, to get even more. Um, but I think like that would be a nice pool of candidates to be available to this department. Um, faster too, and then, and then also to their own.
I, I agree with you. If we could get them into our department, train them to run their own department while training, to help the town and their community out at the same time would be a win-win for us all.
And that might actually help the, also with the services agreement. I'm just thinking because of the renewed cooperation, I mean, this is a very, very good thing, so.
No, it's been a great, I mean, we had an excellent weekend with them.
Yeah.
Uh, the two departments together. And we had members from Meander River and Chatey as well, but, uh, the majority of them were from Bushy River. And, um, you know, the two departments or the two groups clicked very well. And, um, yeah, it was.
It's like especially the bushy members, right? Like that's who we would be looking at as, you know, immediate beneficial members to this department too, so. Food for thought.
Counsel Jessman.
Just a question of clarity on the, the agreement with the province. So yes, they've extended the program, but, uh, we're not signed. When did we sign or sign on to this new extension?
Uh, that was signed, um, yeah, so I was, that was signed by C O McCaskill like two months ago when they sent it in.
Presented to us or?
I don't know if it was.
I don't think so.
We can, I can look into that.
Yeah, no, I.
And.
It was admit of, it was administratively extended but by, by the C O, but it was reported at council at the, at the very next meeting.
Yeah, it was reported that we got an extension, but there was no comment about, uh, our signing into the agreement. I mean, the, one of the frustrations and again, uh, since we brought the WUI team on, there's been complexities and the additions, uh, increases and, you know, uh, it's a good program, but you know, comes a point again, if, uh, you know, causes too much. I mean, are we able to continue on with the program? Get back to the basics and, uh, protect our community and, and deal with our community. I mean, I'm not saying that's happened, but we always said that, you know, it was a great program. But since we've brought it into the fold, there's been this increased difficulty and, uh, drain on our, our overall firefighting program. So, um, that's my frustration. Uh, again, I, it's a great program, but since we've taken it on, there's been a lot more headaches for the community and a lot more increase in demands for resources and personnel.
Counsel Anderson.
So as per se the WUI team, we're committed, we have four individuals that are committed, uh, and signed up as WUI team members. Not eight, four.
Correct.
So there is nothing in that agreement that says the town of high level, if they come back and they're tuckered out to, and are asked to redeploy, that the town of high level has to supply four different members to, uh, take their places. So because they're here and they're tuckered out, doesn't mean that they're of any value to the town if there's a fire, because they may be incapacitated. So the province, if they want more WUI people to, to address that system, should be hiring and, and committing more money to, to those people. Not asking the town of high level to commit more members, uh, to give the WUI team a rest. Uh, and, and by doing that, um, we have four members then that are here all the time. We're, we paid for the summer. They're paid to, to look after the town of high level and our contracts.
Correct, so.
So the other thing that I would like to see is the policies of the fire department brought back to council at a committee of the whole meeting or whatever it may be, so that council can address the policies, uh, that are in place now and are in our different fire agreements that we have, to see whether the service that we're asked to provide is what we really need to provide. Because maybe we're providing services that we cannot afford to do and the budget has just ballooned to do it without any, uh, consultation or, or council knowing what they're agreeing to.
So we can definitely bring the policies back, uh, counselor, um, to clarify, there's, so to clarify that the requirements of the WUI program, we are to supply four people. That's, that's what the, the, the agreement says. If we are one hundred percent exhausted and we went to the province and said, we're done for a couple of weeks because we need to rest people, I'm pretty sure they wouldn't argue that. I mean, we did rest them for a period of time in, in last year. Um, just because they were kind of beyond the point. Um, and, and maybe I'm not making myself clear in terms of the purpose of this is not to provide for more people for the WUI program. Why I brought the WUI team into the discussion was that if we had to continue to provide service, then we still have these people here. And I agree, maybe they would be tuckered out, um, but the incidence of structured fires here are far and few between in comparison to what the deployment requests are. So, you know, the chances of being so exhausted, they couldn't respond to a single fire would be, would be minimal. But going back to the, you know, that the province is requesting us to add more resources, they are not. That is not, that we've not requested, province has not come back to us and said, give us four more people so we can keep deploying them. That has not happened. This was a recommendation, uh, based on, um, the concerns brought to me by council to say, how can we immediately fix this? We can immediately fix it with staffing. And that's why I brought that back. I know it's not the easy decision and the popular decision. The reality is, yes, we are, that is a further drain on the budget. But the other reality is in the last five years, the most this fire department has cost this council or this, the town has been three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for seven full-time staff. So the costing in terms of the net cost to the community were probably the most cost-effective department in the province. Last year, the province or the department made the town five hundred thousand dollars. It costs the citizens zero. So, um, so in terms of the budget, yes, we are, yes, we have expanded our equipment. Yes, we've expanded our services, but the financial drain on the community is, is not there. Um, in fact, it's supporting operations. Um, and medical program is supporting operations to the point that we brought in fifty-five thousand dollars in grants last year to help cover those operations. So I just want to correct the information that it's not a drain on the budget. Um, in the, in the past five years, three of those years or two, sorry, two of those years, we have been in the black in terms of the fire department budget. So it's not a drain on the resources. It's a drain on people, absolutely, but it's not a drain on the budget.
Counsel said it was a drain on the budget. They said it was ballooning the budget. And, and yes, you did bring in money and, uh, that money went to buying a water tender as well. So you have to offset costs with revenue. So I mean, we do put in a lot of capital and, you know, just putting, uh, I don't want to say just, but putting five hundred thousand dollars into the budget does not offset an eight hundred thousand dollar fire truck. So this community puts in a lot of money that way. And I understand, we all understand the problems the fire department is going through. But we would really like to be able to try to get volunteers in our community first and foremost. So we do have a motion on the table. We do have a lot of conversation here. Um, perhaps we first vote on that motion. And then, uh, we direct administration to look at all the options that council has brought forward. Such as, as the, um, well, let's vote on the.
Oh, can I ask a question?
You're like some bad boy in class. Go ahead. Counsel Welke.
So, so just to clarify, because we had two comments, so adding eighty thousand dollars to the budget is, is obviously adding eighty thousand dollars to get us through the summer. But then there was also other comments that that extra eighty thousand dollars isn't going to change a thing for getting through the summer. So what, what's the, please clarify that for me.
Go ahead.
So my understanding is the eighty thousand dollars is going to get us through to next summer. So we might not make a change over the summer. It's going to make a change over the coming winter while we try and identify the issues that we're all aware of and allow administration time to address those. So we would have four additional full-time staff through the winter. They're going to be here for the summer anyway.
It would extend them because their, their contract ends at the end of the fire season?
End of August.
End of August, okay.
So this would extend.
And fire season actually goes to when? December now? Right through the winter.
So it would do some of that, that shoulder season, but, you know, we had some issues this winter with responding and fires. And so this would identify or address that because administration isn't going to solve this overnight. We need to allow them time. If we're going to bring in, um, um, tax advantages or breaks, you know, we have to communicate that to the business owners, to the volunteers, and that's going to take some amount of time. And we've missed the opportunity to do that for this year anyway. So we'd be talking about the twenty twenty-five budget to do that.
That makes sense. Thanks.
So your motion is to extend it till?
Where's to make it for a full year?
To extend the eighty thousand, on a one-time basis. So any other discussion? All in favor? I can live with that. Well, let me say those opposed. Carried. All right. So.
If I may, Madam Mayor, just to clarify, so I've got that we're going to administratively, we're going to come back with a policy framework. And there are going to be a number of policies that we're going to be bringing back. I've also heard council express frustration with regard to, let's call it the conditions that you entered into the WUI contract with, and those have subsequently changed. And you're now questioning your ability to continue. I think there would be value in us communicating, and I'm not sure whether it's Emergency Management Alberta, Fire Commissioner's Office, like, we'll come up with, if you want to call it, a lobby strategy, um, that's going to occur at the administrative level, but also with council or council to, um, mayor's deputy, or sorry, ministers, deputy ministers, et cetera. Um, the other point that I'd like some clarity on is I heard some requests that administration will reach out to the Dene. Um, my experience again, um, with the First Nations that I'm familiar with is the programs that we've explored have been the most effective when we're working from the administrative level up and council's working with the chief and band council down and we hit the band manager or the powers that be. Um, is that, does that make sense? Um, and again, I'm just, um, interested to know the relationship that this council has with the band council administration. It sounds like fire chief to fire chief is great. Um, but where's the, the band manager?
He's new.
Okay. No, no history then, so.
He's acting. So, yeah, council has a good relationship with council. Um, it's difficult to schedule meetings, of course, because they're running a nation and we're running a town. And, and I, I would say probably the best would be for three of us maybe to meet with the chief and two of their counsels. Councillors, um, maybe Terry and I, Jan or Josh. Want to meet with the chief and.
And, and we can work on the, on the details. I just wanted to suggest that as part of, uh, what is administration and the process of working with.
Working with these guys to do the, with the agree, the fire agreement, so.
Okay.
So maybe you and Rodney and Terry work on, um, administration?
Absolutely.
Yes, Deputy Mayor.
Just one of the comments the C E O made before we reach out to the province about the WUI program. I just think there should be a fuller discussion in council before we interfere with that relationship. Um, sure, it may have caused some challenges within the department, but I think overall it's been a bonus for the town. And I would hate for us to communicate the wrong message until we've had a full discussion.
And, and he's absolutely right. I'm not going to dispute the fact that the WUI team has been good for this region, this town. Um, the WUI teams all over have been good, but yeah, we need to have that conversation with the province. We need to look at the contract.
Well, and we can also explore with, I'm sure that the challenges that council spoke about tonight are not. Well, and we can also explore with, I'm sure that the challenges that council spoke about tonight are not unique to just this wooi community. So there are two other? One other.
It's sort of like the RPAC teams, like they send one team, but you need two.
Yeah, Ma- Madam Mayor, if I may, I can give you a bit of an update as well. So like with regards to that discussion, if you would like us to, you know, after we have that general we discussion. But I'm also pretty confident that the operations manager from AEMA would be happy to have a discussion directly with council because they're the program manager. So we have an excellent relationship with Bob, and I don't think there will be a problem with him coming up and discussing that one-on-one with council. And then there is already an effort going on. In fact, just today, there was messages sent to the ministers of public safety and wildfire through the Alberta Fire Chief Association about the need to expand the we program funding to add teams because of the, one, the effectiveness of the teams is good. But the take-home message to the province this year is that there's not enough of them. And that's that's adding to the like the fatigue factor and all the other issues that we've talked about tonight. So you know, that's something to consider for council down the road is to assist on that discussion when when we bring it. But we could certainly, if that's council's wish, we can ask AEMA and and them to come to the table to discuss the program directly with you if that's a wish.
Council, do you want to talk to AMA?
Sure.
I'd love to see Bob again.
I'm sure he'd be thrilled to come back up. As long as the place is not on fire, I think is usually the message that he said.
All right. Long discussion.
Thank you for the discussion.
If council's concluded this, it's been drawn to my attention. I require a motion with regard to item twelve point two. Council did not accept that for information, so if we could ask for that motion, please.
Oh, I thought there was just a briefing note. The website?
Oh.
Oh, twelve point two is the website.
It was a briefing note because it was brought forward from committee of the whole. I have counsel wishes they can just leave it like that, but I thought perhaps they wanted to accept it for information.
Okay. Counselor Librian moves it all in favor. Carried. All right. On to twelve point four, fees.
Director Phillips, I'm sorry.
Change that if you want.
No, we can't.
Well, okay. We'll get we'll get you on board. Administration has, every year it is council's decision to set service user, user and service fees. There are some schedules that have more major changes than normal. Director Clark is not here, but her additions and changes in schedules D and E and F for community services. I did list in the briefing note the major changes. So they've added a super senior age group, seventy-five years plus. And with that, no fees are associated. This is just an age group that we don't have allocated in our in our fees. And then also a monthly fee option when it comes to our aquatic center. And the major change with the sports complex in schedule E, which is our times and also the fees associated with those times. So she did give me the comparables that our facilities and our fees and rates are below a lot of our comparable, like municipalities, Peace River, Fairview, Fox Creek, Valley View. We are lower than even average with all of these public skate, arena time, ice rentals, hall rentals, arena pad rentals. So they did make the changes based on those communications and those comparables. If there's any further questions, I can definitely bring that back to Director Clark, and she can reach out to council via the municipal clerk CAO. But if there was anything specific, she did give me notes for that. And I also asked our airport manager, Luke Colatorti, to be at the meeting just to discuss the changes with schedule B for the airport. So we haven't changed any of our airport fees in a very long time. Luke did go through everything and make his, I guess I will let Luke speak for himself. But this would be the on the administrative side after the after council does approve any fees, administration would have to make changes in our system and then also do that public engagement and reach out to our vendors and any of the leaseholders on these changes. And if council normally does pass the fees by law for June first, if these changes are major and we do find that engagement with our vendors, we can also look at maybe changing those fees for January of the new year rather than doing it mid mid-year with the new, our fire season is always busy at the airport. This might be something that might be a little bit of pushback with our with our vendors. But if there is questions about the airport specifically, Luke is here to answer those.
Okay, so is there any discussion about the community fees, first of all? Go ahead.
I just have one.
Counselor Librian.
One question in its regards to the community's barbecue. Why are we deciding to start charging them twenty-five dollars now?
So that was my input. Thank you, Counselor Librian. The majority of our barbecue use is nonprofit organizations. And with that, what we found as administration and public works is our public works team delivers, retrieves, cleans, refills the propane and does all of that for all delivery of the barbie of our barbecue. It would be a one-time or a day use. It it's just pretty much cost recovery just for that time. And they do it regardless if it is Monday to Friday regular work hours. And sometimes it might be multiple times in the week and weekends. And we just found that with the nonprofit, we even, we do look at fees of our meeting room rentals. For example, we charge a ten dollars an hour rate to nonprofit organizations with the use of our barbecue. It is it is used a lot in the summer. And we are very generous with, we try to get everybody in there. But just for that cost recovery and the time and making that priority for the nonprofit organizations, we thought having either a one-time fee or a daily use fee for the nonprofit would be a cost recovery option.
I know it's something that's greatly appreciated by all the nonprofits that use it. I would personally like to see it remain free for them so that we can help those smaller organizations any way we can. But that's just my take.
Counselor Anderson.
I concur with Director Phillips. I really do believe that there's got to be some kind of a fee. So the senior center or the Golden Rain Society has used the barbecue on two or three different occasions for multiple days. And the town has had, town employees have had to deliver it, retrieve it, clean it, and make it presentable for the next day. And I think there needs to be some kind of a cost recovery for that. And and the twenty-five dollars is a pretty minimal fee. They came and delivered it at ten o'clock in the morning on a Saturday morning and picked it up at eight o'clock on a Saturday night. And it had to be then cleaned and ready to go probably for Monday morning or or who knows when. So I think I think the nonprofit should not feel it, that they should get it for for zero dollars. Yeah, they're not for profit, but there is a cost involved, and it's a pretty minimal fee that we're asking. So that's my take.
Anybody else? Deputy Mayor.
I agree that there should be some minimal cost recovery. Those are pretty expensive units. I can't recall the original capital cost, but ten or fifteen thousand per barbecue rate, and we've got two of them. So you know, whether it's just normal wear and tear and burners and they can probably go through that much propane in a day if we're providing that. So it's not even cost recovery, it's just contribution to the operational cost.
Well, I'm not going to chime in, but I agree, there has to be a minimal cost.
Don't chime in.
Well, I'm not going to recite what everybody said. I do agree. So do you want to vote on it? Okay, moving on, Luke. To the airport fees.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I had put together this document based on research and being part of the Alberta Airport Management Association Group. And I also looked at the close proximity airports, Peace River, Manning, Fort Vermillion, the Crete, Rainbow Lake, and how they operate and what they charge. And then I also used larger airports that have some of the same services that we provide, like the large forestry base. So I had Slave Lake, Grand Prairie, Medicine Hat, Lethbridge, and Fort McMurray as well. The fees that I'm proposing are based off of the comparisons with those airports and what they have to provide and what we have to provide. And going over our fees, we are quite high for the size of our operation. And so the fees on the document that are in green is what I'm proposing. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, I don't know who came up with these fees, especially the parking fees.
Yeah, so these, the fees that are on here were the original fees when I got here in twenty nineteen. I know since I've got here, we've kind of been on a roundabout of talking about updating them, and it's never happened yet, so.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Counselor Welke.
Have we had any concerns from the users?
I wouldn't say specifically the local users because so the local users, again, so on the, it's my second page. The, there is some sort of agreement between the tenants with aircraft based at the high-level airport that they get a reduction of seventy percent. I'm not sure where that agreement.
Seventy percent?
Seventy percent. I'm not sure where that agreement stemmed from or where it started, but I think that is far too high of a reduction. Usually there is a reduction for local users that have a base hangar or a site that is on the premises. But seventy percent is pretty extensive.
Did you hear that from NAV Canada or from Can West?
I saw it on the fees by law, so I I've never seen the agreement, so I'm not aware if there is an actual agreement or if that is just a mistaken note, but.
I've never seen an agreement either.
So.
Interesting.
Yes, Counselor Anderson.
The only concern I have here, and it may not even be part of the equation, but with our annexation in progress and not completed yet or no resolution to it, by changing fee agreement or fees and stuff at the airport, will that give McKenzie County some fodder to, you know, muddy the water further with the annexation? Or are we better off holding off making any changes until after that's all rectified? And I don't know if you can answer that, Luke, or not, so.
It wouldn't make a difference with McKenzie County because we own the airport and we can charge the fees in there.
It's a lot, I I'm all, I I'm I'm in agreement other than that perspective, right?
Yes.
This is based on a five-minute read of the correspondence with the lawyer that's representing us in arbitration. There's the, what's it?
We go in.
Pardon me?
We go in camera for that?
Well, I was just going to say, there there's, it's, I think, public knowledge. The basis of the arbitration is on the RSSA, and I can't remember what that acronym stands for, but.
Regional Service Sharing.
Right, so from my brief review of that, I don't see the fees that are being charged at the airport entering into that debate. Let's use that term.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, just to give some context to the to the reduction in leases or sorry, the reduction of fees for the base operators, because I was director in charge of the airport back then, and that was a council decision probably like three terms or so ago of council, it's been there for quite a while. There was no agreement, it was just a decision in the fees by law, and the whole intent was to attract. So what, it it started, if I remember correctly, it was when we started seeing more development of helicopter hangars outside of the community and other private airfields. And the attempt was to reduce the fees to attract business, like to attract those people to the airport. So whether that worked or not is up for debate, but that, I mean, this is probably going back fifteen years. That has been in place for a long period of time, but there was no agreement. It was just strictly that you get a reduction in fees if you are a base tenant. That was the history behind it. I'd add, I think it's up for debate whether it worked, yeah, yeah. So I just wanted to bring some.
Truly picking numbers.
Just kind of wanted to bring that history back for your council.
Thanks, Rodney. I guess I guess the struggle also is that with what Counselor Anderson said with the annexation, since I've been around, I've had over over half a dozen operators approach the airport in looking at developing. And I guess the conflict was is that the town runs the airport, but the county owns the land. And so it was such a confusion on how to figure out, I guess, the entire process and what those operators had to go through that essentially all of them ended up being local operators, just unfortunately not at our base. So they're all scattered either east of town or in town, around town, so.
That was with the development permits.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, so does anybody? You said that you would like to see this after the fire season, so it doesn't create a problem. Was that you, Luke?
It was more so me. So if if council did feel that major changes like this would affect whether it's annexation or whether it's going into the fire season, we're going to enact this in June, right in the middle of it. And really, it is a reduction in our fees for the most part. Administration is still open to putting all of that communication out for June first, like we normally do with the fees by law.
Do you think it's going to affect the operations at the airport? Like with fuel, parking?
I don't think it'll affect the operation. I just, I wasn't a hundred percent sure of the process of the communication aspect to how we go about changing the fees. I mean, with the, I guess, the base tenants. The big thing I did want to figure out, which is what Rodney had addressed, was about the reduction. So based on the new fees provided, although they are lower, I believe that with changing that contract. With changing that contract from seventy percent to a higher amount, as well as raising. The, uh, fuel flowage by half a cent. Um, based on when we do get busy, that half a cent per liter will, I think, in turn. Make up for the reduction in some of the rates.
Counsel? Should we give them three months to? Communication or six months or? Counselor Welke?
Um, I, I think I, I kind of agree with Counsel Anderson's concern that perhaps we just. Not make any changes right now, um, especially if we don't feel it will drastically impact operations in the short term. That's my take.
Deputy Mayor?
I know that years ago, um. The biggest difference between operating the, the airport in Rainbow Lake and in High Level was the fuel flowage fee was always lower here, which created some. Revenue differences between the two airports in that the planes wouldn't fuel in Rainbow Lake. Um, but they were paying a lower landing fee, so they were trying to double dip, and you know, you can't blame them, they were taking advantage of, of the lower costs everywhere. Um. I guess at this point, I would be in favor of. Leaving the airport fees as they are for the balance of this year, and maybe have this be part of a bigger budget discussion in the fall. And enter it fresh for twenty twenty-five. Hopefully by that time, the annexation has been dealt with. Um, I agree with the CAO, us changing the fee should have zero impact on that process, but I just think, just given the timing and. That we just push this off for the budget in the fall.
The rest, you? Okay, make a motion.
Would be moving the budget with this is the only amendment or not?
This isn't in the budget, is it, these new fees?
By law.
Yeah, but these new fees aren't.
Um, the new fees are not, um, but our revenues already are as per year end revenues for any of the airport, um, revenues, um. But the new fees are not in the budget for the airport.
I'll move the, um, fees as recommended with the exception of, uh, the airport.
So admin.
Be discussed in the fall.
Um, administration will bring back the fees by law for the three readings in, on the next, uh, May thirteenth meeting with those amendments.
Okay. So all in favor of that? Carried, thank you for your report, Luke, we will certainly look at it. Those parking fees made me laugh. We must have been up at midnight doing that. Oh, sorry.
Well, are we done with fees now?
Yeah.
Okay, cuz we're, there's utilities we're supposed to, if we're council discussion as well.
We're, okay.
Schedule G. So we're raising the, well, I guess it was now just agreed to that we're raising the water consumption to three fifty from three dollars. Sewer from three fifty, four dollars per meter squared.
Yeah, that's, uh, oh, sorry, that is already, uh, motion in, in our fees ballot to do the bi, biannual, um, increase of twenty-five cents. Yeah. We passed that two years ago in twenty twenty-two.
It was supposed to go up every year incrementally?
It just says council discussion, so I just wanted to confirm before we move ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, the council.
Did you wanna discuss it?
The council discussion on utilities was for our waste, waste bin, um, replacement cost as cost recovery. With our new waste collection program, um, we are the owners of those assets that have went out to the community, but we don't have. A line item in there for a replacement fee, whether or not they're damaged by residents. Or by LMP disposal or, or contractor. Um, so administration added in a replacement fee at cost recovery, um, similar to we do with our water meters. Um, and it's also, um, been a discussion and not in the fees by law when we did the waste collection program. To do a fee per additional bin. Um, the communication was from Director Straub for ten dollars a month as a fee for an additional bin, um. This would be a lease, sort of like an application program, um, leasing the bin out, that it would just be returned if that person. Is no longer at the property for that additional bin. Um, administration provided options, um, that what has happened in our air, our surrounding areas. Um, some people do a fee for an additional bin, including the waste collection, or they do a bag tag fee for every bag. Um, it hasn't been discussed with our contractor if that bag tag would even be a possibility, but if it is council's wish to have that discussion. With them, um, we can, or if council wanted to. Add in an additional waste bin fee to the fees by law, we don't actually have a line item for that. And that would be included in the, um, public, um, inserts and announcements on the changes for the all utilities.
I thought we already had this discussion.
We did, but it was never added to the fees by law. Um, it wasn't added to the fees by law, it, it, there was a discussion for the additional.
Just an addition.
If you were to pert, want an additional bin, it would be council's wish to add that ten dollars, and then we would. Put that out to the public, I have got inventory from Public Works on how many, um, bins we do have even available, and. Also, the conversation has to be with our contractor on what is that capacity going to look like if. All of those additional bins went out when it comes to the delivery of our service for waste collection on the two days that we currently have.
Are we, are we allowed to discuss it, even though it was passed already?
Well, it's, it's been in, it's been passed, it just wasn't in the schedule. We discussed this like when we got the bins.
But we just made a motion to go with the amendments that were just, can we discuss it or, or not?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I, that was, this was one of the things that I wanted to bring up with the waste bins was, um, I think the additional fee should be. A one-time deposit instead of a ten dollar a month fee, I mean, it, you know, someone has it for, you know, five years, that's, that's quite a bit of money just for an additional waste bin. And I think, going back to the conversation we've had about, um, bag tags, we never discussed. Um, what it was gonna look like this summer with, uh, bags of grass or bags of leaves. We implemented these in the fall, so we really don't know how this is gonna look. Um, I know there's probably a few people here that have more, uh, bags of grass and they're, that it'd have to be thrown out, that their bins can't handle, so. I do think that's something that needs to be discussed, decided on.
Deputy Mayor?
Sorry, my recollection is that we talked about the ten dollar a month for the additional bin when we first ordered these. Um. I guess I wouldn't be opposed to having a one-time fee, but it would have to be significant because our contractor is charging per thing that they tip. And, um, again, I guess if we haven't had a discussion with the contractor about the bag tags. My understanding of how that works, you buy the tag, you put it on your bag at the side of the street, and the operator tips your bin. Puts it down, has to get out physically, put those into the bin, tip it again. And considering we went from one-day collection to two-day collection because of this, I'm not sure how much buy-in there would be from the contractor, but. I guess we could have a discussion, but, sorry, my understanding was we had already agreed to the ten dollar a month.
I thought we had two.
I, I don't remember that, I mean, I remember there being discussion on it, but I don't remember if there being an agreement on it.
I don't know, we'd have to check the motions. We did have the discussion, we did say additional ones would be ten dollars, I don't know if we ever.
I guess the ten dollars, though, isn't for the rental of the bin, it's for the service.
Okay, but so, how, so then, one of my questions is how did this change compared to before when someone had four bins? That were emptied, there was no additional cost per bin when they had their own. So now, we have to charge an additional per month just for them to have an extra bin to throw out more, like it just, to me, that doesn't add up to what the service we were providing before.
Right, and I think the conversation that, um, CAO, uh, Leif and, um, we had today on it was. We are providing a town asset to that property, and it's not. A residence asset that is there, um, we still do pay the, um, estimated eight dollars tipping fee per. Per bin is eight dollars, um, our increase, um, for the, um, waste collection fee. Wasn't due to per bin, it was due to encompassing the two bins plus all the tipping fees of the twenty-five dollars a month. Um. It would be a conversation that we would have to take back to the contractor to see what. Additional bins is this estimated, our asset is total replacement, including our shipping, everything for one bin is about ninety-three. Nine, ninety-three fifty for one bin. And, um, it would also depend on our inventory and how much we're willing to bring in also.
So with that comment, are, are tipping, or the fees that we're being charged, is it eight dollars per bin that's on the street or eight dollars per residents? Okay, so the tipping fee actually doesn't affect how many bins are on there? From what we're being charged by the contractor, so the amount of bins that they have doesn't necessarily affect the cost we're being charged.
Correct with our current contract, um, but our contract needs to, is, needs to be renegotiated with our contractor because we carried forward. The contract for one year to see how this system is working, unfortunately, Director Straub isn't here to. To, um, talk on behalf of that, but as administration, I know that I don't wanna put a fee on any of our residents' bills. If council, one, doesn't have that discussion or it's not related to a fees by law, um, and I just feel like. If council doesn't wanna do the additional bin, we, we can bring something back when we do the three readings for, for that amendment, you guys can make a decision then.
So I would like to make a motion if I can.
Just a minute, please. Counselor, or Deputy Mayor, sorry?
So I believe the discussion that we had was based on two bins per residence for that eight dollar a month fee. If we're adding other bins, that's gonna impact on the fee that, right? Cuz there's a cost for tipping each one of those, right? And so the ultimate plan is, is because there's a chip in those, at some point, we could go and it would be based on. You know, they're picking up only one bin at my place today, so I only get charged for the one, so that's down the road once we get into the organics and all the rest, but. My understanding was the contract was based on two bins per residence, whether people put two out or not. You know, I guess that's to their advantage, but if there were suddenly three bins at half the residences in town, um, I don't think we'd be in compliance with our contract. And this is all on a, sort of a temporary basis as they get used to the new system as well.
Um, I guess one more question, has anyone act, tried to purchase an additional or lease an additional bin yet?
Yes, so we've had, um, residents inquire right from the start because of, one, um, like Deputy Mayor says, it was unknown. When this program ran out, um, was ruled out with what actually, um, can we fit, a lot of people thought going from. Two, four quantity to a two quantity was going to impact, and I think that it had, it has slowed down, but if we are going to. Impose a fee, it does need to be advertised, it does need to go out to the public, um, and whether or not the contractor could. Um, I guess, carry that load of those additional bins would ultimately be part of that factor as well.
So, if we charge eight dollars. So that means four dollars a bin on every, so why wouldn't we just charge an extra four dollars?
We can charge whatever fee council wants, um, it, it really is, so just providing, um. The replacement cost of it, um, our tipping fees, our tipping fee cost is eight dollars, but. We also have a collection contract with our contractor that is what, about nine, yeah.
So, so I mean, we'll, we'll have to renegotiate if council decides if we want these egg bags and.
Exactly, whatever council's decision is, that's what we would have to negotiate and put into our contract with them.
So is there any way we can pull back on this till council has a more fulsome discussion, not at nine thirty at night?
Um, for sure, um, Madam Mayor, we, we could, um, take all of those questions, um, to the contractor to state like. This is what is being presented, what is actually doable with our current contract and. The drive for this originally was the labor force, right, so is the bag tags an absolute no, and then a fee, um, imposed for an additional bin?
So, could we, uh, have that conversation with the, uh, with the, uh, LMP then?
Yes.
So we'll take the utilities out of this? Can you make an amendment to your? I know we did, but I didn't give him a chance to speak, and that's my mistake. But I never realized it was in there for discussion. Can you tell me? I, I see him. But I'm asking the CAO, is there any way we can take this out of the fees by law, or do we have to pass the fees by law?
Um, if council wishes to amend the document that's in front of you and instruct staff to withhold, that council's prepared to approve. The fees with the exception of the following utilities, um, and then whether you want to instruct. Uh, for us to bring back a report from the contractor, um, what's in there. One of the things that Director Phillips and I talked briefly about today, um, that I believe one member of council talked about is what about your compostable waste? Um, that's a very expensive, um, organics are expensive to landfill. Um, and maybe we'll bring that back as part of the discussion, could, I'm gonna say, my experience, that third bin is needed spring and summer. Um, people's waste habits, once you hit, when it's freezing, at least. South of Grand Prairie, um, is, you know, y- you don't have the same waste, um, creation. In the, in the winter months that you do now, and again, that's, we can get those stats, um, from the, the contractor and bring that back for council's consideration as well.
In regards to the ten dollar charge, so when we, when we made that, if my memory is correct, we were gonna let it run like that for a year and then get feedback from our contractor, right? So, that's something that we definitely need from him, but my comment's more so to the bag and tag. Do, are we able to come back with a number, a direct number of what those tags are gonna cost, if we, if he's able to even run them?
Yes, we can definitely bring back the options, so, um, administrations, I guess, um. Position with our contractor would be, this is what was proposed to council in our briefing note, these are the options in the surrounding area, um, Mackenzie County. Does a similar, um, waste collection program with the bags and also with the bins, um, and. This is just a briefing note, I understand council did make the motion, but we still have to bring this by law back to council for three readings. With amendments or without.
So can you make a friendly amendment, Deputy Mayor, to take utilities out? And let it be discussed further? Or do you want it to go to readings and fail?
We're revisiting a decision we've already made, um. How often do we discuss these things, so? I don't know, I, Counsel Liberon, I think, summarized it, that this is for the one-year period until we have a chance to revisit it with the contractor, so.
So your solution is when it goes to the bylaw, to not pass the second reading? If you wanna bring further. If you want to bring further information.
So are we not going to discuss with the contractor or?
Yeah, we're going to. She's going to bring that information. We'll do first reading for information, second reading if you're, you can turn this down. And don't let it go to unanimous consent. All right. Uh, the final operate, oh, sorry. Can we take ten minutes, please?
As, did council vote?
No.
No vote on.
Oh, sorry. Can we have a motion on that? It was a long discussion. All in favor of Deputy Mayor's motion?
Can we have that motion brought back to council so that we know what we're actually voting on?
Uh, so right now it is moved by Deputy Mayor Langford that council requests that administration bring the fees by law number one forty-three dash twenty-four to the next regular council meeting with the exception of the airport to be discussed in the fall twenty twenty-four budget.
All in favor?
Sorry, twenty twenty-five budget. So I said the wording's not perfect.
All in favor? Those opposed? I thought you wanted to oppose it.
For fun, if anybody wants the original garbage, um, motion that was made. No, okay.
Um, good evening, Mayor and Council. So, um, I did put alternative one to just, um, review, um, give your, um, input on any changes to bring back to the May thirteenth meeting as a final. I also put the alternative in there to make amendments as is to approve it tonight. And then this way administration can, can go ahead with just bringing the tax rate by law, um, to the next meeting because we will be bringing that as well to the May thirteenth meeting. Um, because we do send our tax notices out middle of May. So any questions? I can answer as best as I can.
I'm still distraught over this sixty thousand dollar master key. But anyways, I, um, council, is there, uh, anything that you see in there that you want to address? Yeah, so, um, if nobody has anything to address, I would like to, on my big page here. Two thirty? So twelve zero zero two three zero on page two of twenty-one.
Mm-hmm.
Under the consultant and professional fees?
Right, our government relations contract.
So I would like to leave, leave that in the budget, but I want to have a discussion on the, with council. Okay. And holy moly, why don't we hire a I T person with our Trinas contract?
Yes, so our Trinas contract, um, that was the preferred plus, um, service agreement that we, um, brought to council last year due to our staff member that is, um, on, uh, disability. Plus, we do have a consistent visit onsite, um, every month. Our Gabriel from Trinas, he does come every month to do her facility checks. Um, he'll actually be here this week to go and finish off the airport fiber supernet connection with Luke. So it's, it's been working great on and off depending on, we were used to that hands-on. But also we need to be used to remote and being that contact out to I T.
So you don't have any problems getting in touch with Trinas, them doing anybody in our operations?
Hmm, like I personally don't. Um, I know there is some, um, maybe frustrations or, um, but I do feel that any time that I've reached out, employees have emailed or followed up with a phone call. Um, it is also our due diligence to reach out. They don't know what they're going, what ticket is going to come up if, if the employees don't do that first step as well. I've never had issues. Um, they are very good at arranging trips here. It is included. We have twenty-four seven service with them.
Was your mic on?
Oh, I, I was going to ask the same question. How would the service for people reach out to them?
Gabriel speaks a different language than me. Anybody else? Everybody's ready to pass this? Deputy Mayor?
So there would be the one amendment based on what we did with the fireworks night?
Right, I've included, um, removing the one fifty, adding in that eighty thousand dollars for the motion. So it would increase the, um, reserve surplus at the end, uh, seventy thousand dollars.
So I'll move the budget as a.
Okay, all in favor? Carried. We've only been at it. Okay, under new business, the, uh, request for, um, decision with Canada Mortgage. I'm okay with this, but I would like changes in the letter.
And let me just, I'll, let me preface. And I'm sure that council's aware, thank you. I'm sure that council's aware of, uh, the count, that, um, I believe it's Bill eighteen is the recent provincial government's budget that's, or sorry, um, legislation that's making, um, any agreement that a municipality enters into with the federal government requires the province's approval. Um, my personal opinion is that's related to some, uh, agreements that Calgary and Edmonton have, uh, undertaken that are at odds with provincial philosophy. Unfortunately, we're all wrapped into the same thing. Um, the wording on the letter, it's going to come from the mayor and you can get into, uh, what changes you would like. Um, the one recommendation I would have, and again, this was a discussion we had administratively today, was do we typically, when you contact the federal government, you also then contact various ministries, uh, in the provincial government to make them aware of that. Um, at this point in time, I think there would be advantages to get our name in the lie, or in the list. But from some of the news articles that I've read, it sounds like the, um, Prime Minister is saying, well, if you don't like our rules, we'll take our money and go elsewhere. So I think there's nothing to lose with sending it out, but I wouldn't draw attention, um, to the pro, or have, bring us, us to the province's attention at this particular point in time until we hear back from the feds that this actually is a program that's going to be available in, uh, in Alberta.
So I had a suggestion that we send it to Minister Sean Fraser, not just Chris.
That, sorry, you're sending it to whom?
Well, it says to Chris Workington.
Uh, and again, I'm not familiar. It should be going to whoever's the federal minister that's responsible.
Sean Fraser.
Okay, then that's who should be reflected in the letter?
It should be C C to our M P, Chris Workington.
Okay.
And I thought maybe we'd send it to Randy Boss, no, two. Because he's the only liberal person we have in the.
And, yeah, this can be C C to whomever council wishes to include. Um, my caution right now, I guess, is I wouldn't draw the province's attention to the request that's being made by council.
Okay. What does council think? Should we send this letter to the feds with some edits?
But not C C-ing it?
Correct.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Um, uh, Lydia, would you be able to send me a, a copy of this? And I'll put my edits in there so it sounds like me? Okay, thank you. Okay, could someone make that motion, please?
I can make.
Counselor Jessman, all in favor?
In favor.
Okay, carried. Um, request for decision of the property tax.
Um, Mayor and Council.
Director of Finance.
This is, um, just a, uh, from our April eighth, um, resolution for the high-level native friendship center application. So we have received everything and it's just administration to, um, move alternative one.
Could someone make that motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
So we've had discussions in the past on the one, um, unit on a hundredth street. They now have it as a food bank. They used to have it as the youth center. That building is basically never used. So don't they run the food bank out of their main office?
Mm-mm. They run it out of a building where Rona used to be.
Okay, so just, I'm not sure why we would give tax break on a building that's not being used for that purpose. I know we've exempted it out before.
Right.
Um.
Yeah, because they said it was used as a youth.
Yeah, there's, no one ever uses that building.
I don't know, council, what do you think?
So in the past, council has removed that property, um, as Deputy Mayor said, um, with more clarification and, um, I guess, reporting from high-level native friendship centers. So it, if that property does want to be, or council does want to remove that, that it has been done in the past based on what the actual usage is.
So.
Counselor Wilkie?
So I guess in this particular organization's, uh, circumstance, it's a little more complex than just a organization asking for this exemption wherever they're operating. These is of multiple properties and maybe you're using some or not. So we don't have the provision within the, um, request, was it, it request form to say what, what is actually happening in that, in that building? Is it in there?
Yep.
Yeah, it says it's a food bank.
Yeah, so.
And then that's what they put for this year. So we're asking them to, I guess, prove that.
Um, we, we don't.
If they want it to be exempt.
Hmm, we, we could ask, um, but normally, um, based on copter, so based, um, like our, um, based on their assessment and where they're following in those guidelines, their application states that this building is used for that purpose. But no evidence is ever provided, but we can request. We, we have requested and, and, um, with no evidence being presented based on their application, um, we have denied that property. Um, it was previously, I think, the YAC or Youth Center, the Youth Center. And, um, it was vacant and the High Level Native Friendship Center Society accepted that it was vacant. That's why council did deny the, the request for the exemption, so.
So they're actually saying that that place is being held as a food warehouse? Yeah. You're the, you, you see the no activity there?
Even as a storage facility, they, they might not be using it actively with the public, but.
No, they're not using it with the public.
Mm-hmm.
So what do you want, council, you want to leave it in or take it out? Your, it's your motion? Okay, Counsel Librian, all in favor? Carried. Okay, so no notice of motions. Can we move into a closed session, please? Someone want to make that motion? Counselor Jessman, all in favor? Carried.